That's wrong. Think about that. That's not fair. We're still spending lots and lots of money. I know I'm almost done, but I just want to tell you that there's that. There's so many transitional things that have not been considered, and my kid has tons of anxiety. And he's in counseling right now, again, over this. And he says, "I'm done. I quit. It's over." And he deserves two more years. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Glavin.
Okay. Hi. Going to be a little different, but, you know, my usual. At the May 15 meeting, there was an equal opportunity schools update. I noticed one glaring problem with the presentation that was not addressed by anyone, not EOS and not 204 personnel, and that would be the issue of class sizes in 204. In case you have forgotten, our students sit in some of the highest class sizes in the area. Higher class sizes are not conducive for optimal learning for any student. Research shows this. I am concerned that 204 has entered into a commitment of increasing student numbers in AP classes without the most important commitment of all, and that is understanding that these classes must be smaller to ensure the optimal success of any and all students. I wish you would get the fact that an AP Econ class size of 36 is way too large and cannot handle another two or three students. AP Calc at 33 is ridiculous. AP English at 35 is flat-out crazy. And never mind the fact that the students are turned away from some classes such as AP Chem if too many express an interest in taking the class. Increase the number of students all you want, but for goodness sakes, you must get some control over these class sizes and get the class size numbers down to a reasonable level. Otherwise, you are doing no one any favors, least of all the students you purport you are trying to engage in higher-level learning. Yes, you may have a slide at the end of the school year that shows an increase in students taking AP classes or higher-level classes, but do you really think any of these -- what do you really think any of these students is getting out of a high-level class of 38 or 40 students? I also ask, what exactly EOS is going to add to the district? I contacted them in October and asked what their research showed regarding class size and success of students of color. They emailed me back and said that this was not an issue they had researched, and they are not aware of any other institution that had researched this issue. Again, I find this troubling since I have been able to find credible research stating that class size is indeed a factor in students of color's success. Strange that EOS would not have any knowledge of that. So I ask again, what is the desired endgame and who exactly is supposed to benefit? Because once again, I only see obnoxiously large class sizes coming from this new push and another crop of frustrated students. On another note, according to Section 2.2 in the Board Policy Manual, one of the major powers and duties of the school board is approving the curriculum, textbook, and educational services. Given the extreme changes made by the administration to the STEPS program last month, it certainly seems like the curriculum and services have been markedly altered from prior years. I am wondering why these changes were not presented to the board in a public PowerPoint presentation, and the board required to vote in public on these changes. It certainly seems that this is what your board duties require. Informing board members by phone of such momentous changes without public discussion and voting does not seem to follow your policy. It is also callous to the STEPS population to allow no public input or discussion on a matter of this magnitude. And lastly, I know I'm almost out of time, but since our district has no money, the STEM schools should be ended and those funds put back into our district for distribution among 204 students. We have many blue-ribbon schools. It's not like our 204 STEM students would get an inferior education, but our other students are getting shortchanged when our limited resources are being used to educate non-204 students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chris Harvey.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the STEPS program. My name's Chris Harvey, and my son Trevor Harvey will join the STEPS program in 2021, which we're very excited about. Since 1999, my husband and I have been very involved with the district in a variety of levels, including the PTA and various neighborhood organizations. I was so surprised to hear the district had decided to move the STEPS program from its facility back to the high school level for the coming year. Some of my many concerns regarding this include the students being in separate facilities, medical care, and the dire need for an oversight committee with accountability needed at all levels of the STEPS program. STEPS is an exciting opportunity for our young adults to go to school at the next level, and this STEPS program will realistically be the only opportunity for my son to increase his education at the next level and become a viable member of society as he graduates. I'm sure most if not all of you have attended college, and you can you imagine, and I know you are imagining looking forward to graduation in high school and going to that next level, only can you imagine then only to be told, not only would you not be going to college or you may be going to college, but it will be back in your high school. And not only back in your high school, but possibly your rival high school. If you were to be put back in high school, you weren't allowed to talk or socialize or eat with the students and your former peers, you would feel very isolated and hurt, on top of being confused as why you're back in high school and not continuing your education. This is detrimental to the students, and I would like to see the STEPS program be brought back under one roof beginning in August of 2018. I'm also concerned about medical care. My understanding is that there is only going to be one nurse to service all three schools. This is not practical or logical, especially with all the traffic in our area, and should an emergency happen, become a very real liability to the district. With the STEPS program under one roof, this issue would be solved. Last, I'm proposing that an oversight committee be immediately formed to develop a plan for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year and to move forward to the future. This committee would consist of educators, board members, staff, and current and future STEPS students. The STEPS program is set to triple its enrollment by 2020. The committee should look at alternative facilities to bring the STEPS program back under one roof, look at additional staff that will be needed to be hired and trained due to the increase in enrollment, and looking at the transition coordinator to be onsite with all the support staff to assist with the day-to-day operations of the STEPS program and ensure the safety of those students. Right now, my understanding is the supervision is offsite. I would like our STEPS program to reflect the established and revered reputation that 204 schools hold at the elementary and high school education level. Let's take the STEPS program forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Penny Boyle.
Okay. My name is Penny Boyle, and my daughter Sophie is going into her second year at STEPS. The decision to move STEPS from the Wheatland School has been made. In June, we received a letter telling us which high school and case managers our students were assigned to, and in this letter, it also stated that this was a temporary solution and that the board will be working on a permanent solution during this upcoming school year. What now is needed is to make sure that the right decisions are being made for the students that are currently in the program and for the students, our future students that's going to go to STEPS. We're going to need a location that can accommodate all STEPS students and that will keep the students and the teachers and the staff together. A location that is separate from high schools and that can accommodate Special Olympics, a location that can grow and change with the needs of our students and with the STEPS program. To find this location, the board, teachers, and parents need to work together. We have to put our students first, represent them the best we can collectively. Teacher, staff, and parents are the people that know these students the best. So I ask the board to listen to us and have an honest and open dialogue so that the right permanent location can be found for our 204 STEPS students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Ralph Podron.
Last month, the board approved a three-year natural gas contract per recommendation from Director Building of Operations Todd DePaul. It's worth millions of dollars. He referenced a two-year contract expiring June 30 of this year. Note, the FOIA response that I have here has -- shows that the board has never voted to approve contracts of natural gas the past seven years. Why all of a sudden does the board vote to approve this current three-year contract when it was never in the past? Can someone answer that? I emailed Dr. Sullivan the following. Is this the same contract effective July 1 of this year? I have good reason to ask this question. A simple yes or no question, and I can't get a response. I've sent numerous letters to Superintendent Sullivan concerning this and many other suspicious vendor purchases. To date, she has never responded despite overwhelming evidence I've received from FOIAs from 204 to support my allegations. Selective transparency appears to be the norm. Incidentally, and FYI, the monies for all of this, guess where it's coming from? Property taxes. District 204 leadership has been elected and trusted to be stewards of hard-earned taxpayer dollars to need spent wisely. Those administrators in charge have very generous pensions, large salaries, and great benefits. They need to understand the struggles of the average taxpayer supporting 204. I spoke with two very prominent local officials who stated me this, and they're based on everything I showed them. They said, "This is either, one, arrogance; two, incompetence; three, a cover-up; or four, all of the above." I still have five other vendors with major issues to bring out publicly, which I will bring out. As a result, more FOIAs are necessary to get answers. I hope the STEPS program is having more success in getting results than I am because I would love to see those funds that have been misspent recovered and put toward the STEPS program. I will email all my documents to the board, to the superintendent, and to all. But I would -- I really don't know what it's going to take to get an answer, but I've been told, Ralph, go the distance. You have to go through the chain of command before you take the next step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we now move to our superintendent report and consent agenda. Dr. Sullivan.
Okay. I am looking forward to starting a meeting without talking about Springfield, but it is not going to be tonight. As you know, we finally have a state budget, but the spending bill that is now law requires that a new school funding formula be changed to an evidence-based model before --
Bunch of ways.
Sure. As I was saying, the law requires that no funds can be distributed to schools unless there's an evidence-based funding model. Right now, there's just one bill that has an evidence-based funding model, and that's Senate Bill 1, which has passed both chambers but has not yet been sent to the governor. Today, Governor Rauner held a press conference to say that he would use his ammendatory veto powers when the bill gets to his desk because he is unhappy about how the bill treats the Chicago Public Schools. There is another evidence-based funding bill supported by Senator Barakman, but it has not been called for a vote, and as Jay will share later, neither bill will save the day for Indian Prairie. However, we do fare better under the Barakman plan since the small increase in funding is being distributed more broadly throughout the state rather than much of it going to CPS. We again urge our legislators to find some common ground to get an evidence-based funding model to the finish line before the first installments are due to schools in early August. If you looked at the calendar, it's July 17, so time is of the essence. While we will be able to open our doors in the fall, there are other districts in this state that cannot open their doors without those August payments, and this should not be acceptable to any of us. We're also carefully watching the federal-level potential changes to the Affordable Care Act, which I believe one of our speakers talked about, could mean a loss of over $1 million in Medicaid reimbursement for our special-needs population. And the recent House Education Budget got its Title II funds, which we use to fund professional learning costs for our teachers in the district. That amounts to another loss of just over $400,000. So again, we'll continue to wash -- watch Washington as well, and we may need to adjust our budgets along the way. As you know, we have some significant decisions to make this fall about some of our buildings. That includes Wheatland and Indian Plains, both from the maintenance side and the enrollment side. Our budget certainly impacts those decisions, but we can also -- we can't make any long-term plans without information from the demographic study that the board approved in the spring. Our demographer has indicated that we can expect to have a report for you either in August or early September at the latest. And once we have that information, we can start pulling together some potential plans for the future to bring forward to the board for discussion. In less than six weeks, and I can't believe I'm saying that, we will be opening our doors for our students for the 17-18 school year. The summer is always a really incredibly busy time. I know people think the summer is break time, but it really is not. It's an incredible busy time as we prepare to get everything ready and in place for our students and staff. It's an incredibly busy season for our operations and maintenance department with multiple projects underway. We continue to be on schedule with more partial air conditioning work at our elementaries, and we will have 51% of all of those elementary classrooms completed by the start of the school year. On some good news note, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, on behalf of District 204, was awarded a $36,000 grant by the Dunham Fund to support the district's expanding robotics initiative. So the grant covers the expenses to expand the robotics program to four additional schools, and it will also cover the cost associated with maintaining the clubs at 18 of our schools as well as hosting the local and regional robotics competitions. So we want to thank the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for their continued support of our robotics program. We certainly could not offer that program without that support. And we have two new administrative replacement hires that we want to introduce you to tonight, and that should round out our team for the upcoming school year. So if you're okay, we'll move on to that. We'll start with the Assistant Principal for Skullin Middle School. He has quite a fan club back there. I'm pleased to bring forward the names of Joseph Peratori. Joe comes to us from Oak Park School District, where he taught at Percy Julian Middle School. Joe, will you stand up so they know who you are back there with the really cute kids? Joe also has experience at teaching at high school at Glenbard North, and we're very excited to welcome him and recommend Joseph Peratori for your approval to the position of Assistant Principal at Skullin Middle School.
I need a motion to approve Joseph as Assistant Principal.
I move that the Board of Education approve Joseph Peratori as Assistant Principal for Skullin Middle School as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Motion passed. Congratulations, Joseph.
Hopefully, all that clapping is going to wake up the youngest there. Joe, welcome to Indian Prairie.
Ice cream.
Celebration time. We would also like to welcome a new Assistant Director for Student Services. Tracy was not able to be with us tonight. It's Tracy Hamm. She comes to us from the Chicago Public Schools, where she most recently served as a special education administrator. Tracy is also an attorney with background and experience with special education law, and we're pleased to recommend Tracy Hamm for your approval to the position of Assistant Director of Student Services.
And I need a motion to approve Tracy as Assistant Director.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Tracy Hamm as the Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
And congratulations, Tracy. We now move to the consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items F through N.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items F through N as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
We now move to consent agenda items for separate consideration. Approval of the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to the Board of Education to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Epstein.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Next, the approval of administrative multi-year contracts. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education -- hang on a second, I've lost my -- there we go. I move that the Board of Education approve the administrative multi-year contracts for Kim Erlenbaugh, Lena Guerari, Laura D. Johnston, and Steve Severson as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we move to discussion, which is expanding and strengthening the best practice supports for struggling students, our EOS report?
No.
No?
District Management Report.
District Management -- excuse me, District Management Report.
She just assigned you to another --
Another group.
All right, I've got one group, it's enough.
Meyer.
Good evening, everyone. We're happy to be here this evening to give you the first update from the work that we've been doing with District Management Group. Jen Law and I, along with Dr. Sullivan and our other cabinet members, have been able to do some good work with them. We've heard some of the results. We've been able to share it a little bit with some of our administrators and the guiding coalition. So we'd like to have this opportunity to share it with you. I'd like to introduce Nate Levinson from District Management Group to start it off for us.
Great. Good evening.
We told him to make sure to speak into the microphone.
I did exactly what I was told. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share an update on our work with the district. We are at a very good place in a long process. It's going to take about 20 minutes to share the highlights. I know you have some materials and a presentation. I'm not going to go through every slide of it. There's more here for you to read at your leisure, and we'll certainly want and appreciate your questions and comments, but if you could hold them to the end of about the 20 minutes. And I do that because you'll see as we go forward, many of the suggestions and opportunities for the district are very interrelated, so I think we can have a better conversation when all the ideas are put on the table at once. With that, let's get started. Just for -- if you look at even the title of tonight's sharing, it's "Expanding and Strengthening Best Practice Supports for Struggling Students." I want to make a comment around struggling students because it's a term that not everybody is familiar with and not -- and we choose it specifically because if you look at the evolution of how we've -- how school districts across the country have worked to support kids with needs of all types, there has been a tendency, often driven by the federal government, to divide based on funding sources. If I'm a student living in poverty, that's Title I. If I'm a student with a disability, that's IDA and special education. If I'm not either of those, that could be MTSS or RTI, depending on the name you use. What we're suggesting and why we choose the term "struggling students" is that it encompasses all of that and more. This is really a pretty holistic look at what do you do for kids who are going to need more than simply the core instruction that all students receive. So to help set that, we'll take a minute or two to remind you who were here when we started. I know a few of you are new. What were the goals of our work together? Share the highlights of what we have found from our work so far, touch on what comes next, and as I said, leave time for your questions. And I've shared that, again, our goal was, at the end of the day, our goal is to help you and your team and your staff do more and better for kids who struggle. The way we're going to do that is by starting with understanding your current practices, policies, approaches, services, so we can really understand where you are and in the concept of continuous improvement, compare and contrast what you're doing to those best practices. And then, through a very holistic and inclusive process, map out what comes next, how do you move from where you are to where you want to be, and then help you do exactly that. The game plan we had shared, as I said, starts with the diagnostic. From there, we move into this, what we call, "Aligning on Key Opportunities." And this is important, and I have empathy for all of you who I'm sharing with tonight. I spent six years on a school board, so I've sat in your seats. I also spent some time as a superintendent, so I have great sympathy for and appreciation for the superintendent as well.
Good choice of words.
I've been there. The reason we use this expression, "Aligning on Key Opportunities," there will always be more things you want to do and more good things to do than you will have the bandwidth to do in the next year or two or three. So there is a process of prioritization that's very important, and in our experience, and we've worked with more than 100 school districts, trying to do more than is humanly possible doesn't get you to a good place. We'll move from there, once there's been this alignment and focus, to creating a thoughtful plan for how do you move forward, and then we will be helping you actually move forward. The process we went through was very comprehensive to understand where are you today. We did a great deal of both qualitative and quantitative research, interviewed many hundreds of people, focus groups with your staff, parents, from pre-K through 12 and beyond, grade 12 and beyond, general education, special education, teachers, administrators. I really tried to talk to an incredibly wide range of people, and at the same time, augment our understanding by visiting classrooms, looking at a lot of hard data, and also something that we call "schedule sharing," because one of the hallmarks of staff who work with struggling students is they do so many different things. They've got a very complex task, very complex job with many, many tasks. So we've -- we asked the staff to share what they did for a typical week in very fine detail. 96% of the staff who were asked to participate, over 1,000 people participated with really high-quality data, right on time. They did a phenomenal job. For a district your size, we believe it is the highest participation rate we've had, which really, you know, goes to, there's great interest, there's an openness, there is a comfort with being reflective and a desire to improve that really came through in many, many ways. So we feel that at this point, we have a very good understanding of where you are. There's a lot of good things going on, but like any organization, also opportunities to do even better. Again, really want to stress that you can't do all of this at once. You're going to need to focus. It typically takes two to three years to move forward on a couple opportunities. And I also want to caution that I'm going to be talking, because I've only got 20 minutes or so, we're going to be generalizing. Everything I'm suggesting does not apply to every student. It will apply to many students, but not all, that's the IEP, the I stands for individualized. There will always be exceptions to these recommendations, and we know that, and I want you to know that. So let's talk about what we learned. Let's start with the good news, because good news never gets enough attention in this world. Five commendations, the district staff were passionate and committed to ensuring that all students succeed. There is just great energy and great commitment coming from your teachers and administrators. The district's introduced some important programs to enrich student learning. This is a can-do, moving-forward district. The district offers a variety of in-house supports to support students with severe needs. That's great to see, and even greater to see that people feel very good about doing that. They're doing this for all the right reasons. You've got a strong early intervention pre-K program. And we really saw district leadership as striving for continuous improvement. You take these commendations, what they tell us is that you've got talent and passion, that you're not starting from a horrible place. We work in many districts where we're starting much further away from where you want to be. And it tells me, at least, that if we can focus and maintain focused over a few years, there's really nothing you can't do. So what might you do? Really important that... I've got five thoughts to share with you, and I'll give a highlight of each of them. But to know that if our goal was to find 100 things you could do better, any organization your size, there are 100 things you could do better, and if you solved all 100 of those, there'd be another 100. A big part of our work was to look very broadly, but ultimately, think about what is a short list of the things would have the greatest impact on your students? And we continually through this process tested and bounced this off of your leadership and of your staff to make sure it wasn't just our ideas, but these were ideas that seemed to have traction with the people who work and live here. So the five opportunities to consider. The first is to provide more guidance for the creation and implementation of a district-wide framework for RTI that's consistent across all schools. That's mouthful, but what it's really saying is the district has made a serious commitment to helping students who struggle before special education, for helping students who don't have a disability, that's the RTI part of it. What we heard from staff, really across the entire district, teachers, principals alike, is that an RTI is hard. Every district in the country is struggling to figure out how to do it well at scale. And what we've heard is that there'd be great value in having a smaller list of interventions, a... Not a one-size-fits-all, but more than an infinite range of possibilities. So that district central office leadership, building leadership can provide support to schools and staff on how to do this. Because if you think about the bandwidth of leadership, if they had to support 100 efforts, not possible. If they had to support 10 efforts, probably not possible. But if they're able to settle on through an inclusive process, three or four perhaps, you could support that and still allow schools to pick and choose and customize as appropriate. So finding the right number is important, but the idea is so that you can do a few things better and more supported, and your staff and building leaders will thank you greatly for that. Second opportunity would be to provide additional instructional time for intervention, so all students can master grade-level content. Here, the idea is deceptively simple. It says that if I'm a student who struggles, I may need more time to learn and master the material than students who don't struggle. And in some parts of this district, that's happening, but it doesn't happen for every single student. There are lots of other good things that happen, but the idea that time is a really important variable in helping students master material. Richard DeForre, a very, very smart man from Illinois, I might add, not too far from here, said that learning should be the constant and time should be the variable. And too often, we find ourselves doing the opposite, saying, hey, we have 90 minutes to teach reading, and if you learn, great. And some people will learn a lot, and some people learn less. And this idea says, no, everybody should learn what needs to be learned, and some kids will need more time to do that. The third opportunity was to expand social, emotional, behavioral supports for students by streamlining meetings and paperwork and providing more strategies to teachers. That one's a mouthful as well, because this is really trying to encapsulate the idea that if you talk to any teacher, any principal in this district or any district in this country, the social, emotional, behavioral needs of children are increasing. We can debate why, but it is not worth debating whether, if they're increasing, they are. You've got a lot of talented people here in the district to help meet those needs. And again, these are folks who are asked to do a lot of things. We have seen and they have shared with us that every minute, again, 100% compliance is a requisite, but every minute that they're not in a meeting, every minute that they can get their paperwork done quicker is a minute that they can be working with students. They've shared with us, and we have seen from their schedule sharing, they feel the mix isn't optimal. If we could help them, if you can help them find ways to streamline the meetings and paperwork, they would love to spend more time and provide more support to kids. And then what might they do with that extra time? Your classroom teachers are rightfully asking for more strategies to manage and support kids with behavioral challenges. So where these two things come together is if you can free up these very talented people, they're going to do two things. They're going to work with kids, and they're going to work with teachers. And both students and teachers will benefit. Fourth opportunity is to consider specializing key roles within special education service delivery in order to improve the academic performance of students with mild to moderate disabilities. This one, I do want to kind of jump to a slide, because that one can be a little confusing. But again, if you think about your special educators, you've got passionate, smart, capable people who are asked to do an enormously wide range of things, wider than, quite honestly, than any other role or type of teacher in your district. They need to know the material they're teaching. They need to know the skills of how to teach students who struggle academically, which is a different set of skills, a different pedagogy than teaching kids who learn perhaps quicker. They also are expected to have expertise around social, emotional, and behavioral supports. They're also expected to know the law, do the evaluations, manage the IP process. You've asked them to do all of these things, and they do. What the research has shown is if you allow them to play to their strengths, some of your staff are going to have greater expertise around pedagogical expertise. Let them coach and support classroom teachers. Some are going to have more expertise around social, emotional, behavioral. Let them spend more of their day doing that and less doing academics if that's not where their strengths apply. Again, when we've shared this with teachers, this resonated significantly with many of them. What tends to be the reason we ask people to do this incredible breadth of offerings of services is because if I do everything, it is much easier to schedule. It really isn't that this was driven because people thought, hey, this is the best possible way to do it. It was driven here and elsewhere, everywhere in the country. This is the easiest way to do it. And if we can work with staff and principals and schedules to allow your staff to play to their strengths and their expertise, they will be happier, they will be more effective, and kids will learn more. Let me just jump back. And then the last opportunity for consideration was to expand the reach of related services. This is speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, by just managing the group size and scheduling. Again, what we saw and heard is that the schedules of, say, a speech therapist, they're pretty... they're like one of the last people to get to schedule. Buildings get scheduled first, other programs and services get scheduled. It's done very much in series, and somebody has to be kind of at the end of the line. And that makes for less effective schedules. And one of the things that more districts are moving towards is thinking of scheduling as a group exercise, as a holistic exercise, where actually you build sets of schedules for a building, not I do mine, then you do yours, then somebody else does theirs. So it's our belief that between these five, and again, I don't think you can actually tackle all five of them first, ultimately perhaps, but between these five, these would be what we saw as five of the highest leverage opportunities to raise achievement, expand services, and improve services. These tend to be cost-neutral. And again, I think really both staff, parents, and children would benefit from it. The last thing I want to do, and then I will stop talking and take your questions, is kind of what comes next. So just jumping back to our flow chart, at this point, we have shared, we've done our research, we've done the diagnostic, we have started sharing the findings, we've shared them, we and the leadership of the district have shared them with principals, we've shared them with the guiding coalition. So far, so good. I think the feedback has been that this makes sense. I always ask people one question, if you had that mythical easy button, and if you pushed the easy button, and you could have all of the five of these things, would you push it? And what we're hearing is, yeah, we would, but we didn't, we don't see the easy button. People are questioning or asking, want to talk about, how do we do this? But the nice part is they're not talking about if we should do this. And so where we're moving next is to continue to get feedback from staff and leadership to meet in the, probably in September, early October with the guiding coalition, to get their feedback as to where the priorities might be, get feedback from others, where do you start? And then, once we decide where, once you all decide where you want to start, to create what we call a vision for success. And what I mean by that is, we want to put a stake in the ground that says, three years or four years from today, this is where we want to be, this is what success would look like for any one of these initiatives. And then map a plan back from that, set milestones, so you're not waiting three or four years to know whether you're making headway and making progress. And then get to work and start doing this. So I think with that, I will stop talking and take your questions.
Questions?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yeah, I have a few.
Great.
Well, I love the approach and the identifications of the improvements. I think you're probably exactly on, probably exactly on from most districts. But overall, when I look at that, and I looked at some of the things that were mentioned about staffing, and I couldn't help but go, don't we need more people? Because, well, I asked the one question, how did we, you know, lose some of this? And, or what was the reason why we didn't have an alignment coming from the top? And it was because we let go of our coaches. So, yeah, so that's a big question for us, because we're looking at, how do we do this with our current staffing? Or is this telling us that we do need to really be increasing our staffing at some level? That's my biggest question right now.
The way we think about that, and again, I have both school board and superintendent experience as going through my head, is having more staff to do this would be easier and better. Just no two ways about it, you've lost staff, staff that played important roles around RTI, around behavior. That said, so at the same time, if more staff would make this easier, and it would, we also believe that you can make substantial progress and headway with the staff you have, but you cannot just layer more on top of the staff you have. And they're already busy, stretched, many people, their jobs are wider and broader than anybody else. So as we think about this, if you can't add more staff, and that's your question, and I know you've got budget discussions and a state that can't make up its mind. Sorry, the rest of the country does watch and wonder. But the question is, you know, at least from our perspective, you will have as much staff as you will have. And then the question is, how do you do the most good for your students with what you have? And part of that, if you kind of dissect some of what I shared, one is, every minute that you can take away from paper and meetings is a minute of more services. Allowing people to play to their strengths is going to help the staff you have do more and do better. Also, the idea is, when you hire new staff, because we believe being very clear about what the skill set you're looking for, what their role will be, rather than generalist but more specific, will also help you do more for the kids within your current budget. But nothing here suggests that if you can afford more staff, that that'd be a good thing as well.
So, I guess, I'm looking at the, basically, a special education teacher had those four areas that they have, you know, that they are generally in charge of. I just can't get my head wrapped around how you would eliminate one of those, because their expertise is going to be so much in line with especially the case management. And I guess if I was going to pull something, it would be the case management, if they could somehow do that and give that to somebody else. But, I mean, how do you do that?
So let me be clear, and again, it was a short, it was a quick run-through of the idea. All four of these things have to continue to happen, and they're going to continue to happen by special educators. But imagine a school, and I'm going to make my life very easy and oversimplify, imagine a school with four special educators. Right now, all four of them do all four of these things. In some schools, and some staff have said, you know, all four of these things have to happen, and all four of us are going to be here, but rather than all four of us doing all four of these things in equal proportions, if I am stronger in behavior management and you are stronger in the teaching of reading, wouldn't it be better if you did more teaching of reading and I did more behavior management? So all these functions stay, and all the people stay. But the, how the work is allocated amongst the team is, and again, we've been in many school systems where the teachers themselves will help think through what the best allocation is. But there has been for probably 30 or 40 years now, some implicit expectation that everybody is good at everything. And we build schedules and assign work based on that assumption. And as we talk to staff and as they shared with us, they have strengths, like all of us. And allowing people to play to their strengths makes them, both raises morale and also improves outcomes. So all these things clearly stay and have to get done.
Yeah, I guess, like I said, I can kind of understand it from one level, but the life I see, I'm having a hard time with it, so I'd be interested to see how it turns out.
All these things have been done elsewhere, so it can be done, but it definitely takes time.
Yeah.
And a lot of planning.
A lot of different kind of scheduling.
Yes.
Other questions?
Can, when I look at specifically the elementary extra time interventions, and this is getting a little bit to Kathy's question, when it says best practice elementary schedule, and then best practice of an extra time period, so if we operate under our current constraints of staff, it's not increasing, what would that exactly look like at an elementary level?
So this question of finding extra time for kids who struggle, let's talk about what it doesn't require. It's not a longer school day, so we're, none of this is suggesting a longer school day, but one of the most common, one of the most common structures we've seen, which many of the principals really seem to like this idea, is that when you're building your master schedule, every grade will have, sometimes it's called what I need, a win period of thirty minutes. So nine thirty to ten, the entire first grade has this thirty minutes set aside, and that is going to be for enrichment, it's going to be for extra help, it can be for related services, if that's what I need. And what we're, what this does is, it says some kids need more of something than other students. And by having that scheduled in, the extra help isn't in lieu of corn instruction, because one of the things we did see in some schools, and again, this goes to the scheduling complexity, I can have an IEP that says I get thirty minutes of help in reading. And certainly, I suspect when the parents and others sat around that table writing the IEP, they were thinking, maybe they read DeFoe or heard Nate, they said, you know, kids who struggle need some extra time, so we're going to give thirty minutes of reading. But nothing actually prevents that thirty minutes of reading to happen during reading. So I could get pulled out of reading to get my extra help in reading, but then it's not really extra. Or I could get pulled out of math, or I could get my speech therapy during math or during reading. So the idea is to build a schedule that has both time in the day for this whatever I need, this win time, and it may be enrichment as well as some extra help. And to do it in a way that this extra help isn't coming at the cost of that core reading instruction. And it also, by staggering it, you would have, imagine during that thirty minutes, you could have every special educator free, you could have any ELL teachers free, you could have any interventionists free, you have the entire grade level doing it at the same time, so I can group kids across classrooms. It's kind of a, looking at the school day holistically and trying to create these blocks of time that can be a little more flexible.
Just, I'm just looking at a classroom size of twenty-six, or let's say twenty-four, you know, twenty-two for twenty-four children, and everybody needing, having different needs. And I'm just struggling with how that happens with one teacher, or even if you do, you know, the entire, if you have four second grade classes, and you have four second grade teachers who are each trying to work with, there are probably more than four levels of need. That's where I'm.
And so to, and again, we, you know, there's all, as I always say, the devil's in the detail, and there are a lot of details here, but part of the structure, when I talked about building schedules as a system, so during that win time, not only would you have, so those four classroom teachers that you talked about, but would also have three or four special education teachers free, would also have math or reading interventionists free, if you had Title I staff, they would be free. So we've seen districts able to get seven, eight, nine teachers free at the same time. That's, that's a pretty good number to be able to then create what are called flexible groups, and pair students together with similar needs, and match them to teachers who can focus.
Other questions?
When you mentioned scheduling as a group exercise, isn't, is that taking place right now in our professional development? Did you get any of that, not scheduling per se, but like what they're going to do for this particular child, you know, for their needs? Is that what you're talking about with scheduling? Are you talking about tasks? I mean, what?
We're talking about the master schedule. So what time does everybody have PE? What time does everybody have art and music? And so...
That was a little confusing, sorry.
So what's happened over time is, you know, with some enrollment shifts and also some austerity, is, you know, we used to have a full-time PE teacher, art teacher, music teacher there every day. And then we were able to be more flexible in that scheduling. And over time, we have done some group scheduling, just out of need because we share teachers. So one school might have a teacher, a PE teacher there for four days a week, and then the other day, that teacher goes to another school. But what we're talking about now is looking, and they have a very nice system, that you put stuff in, and it spits it out, and you can take a look at it and adjust it, where you set priorities, and that you can work together and have a few different models, and have your staff talk about it, and what works best for us, and those kinds of things. So we have done some group scheduling that way, but this allows us to do it in a more systemic way, look at, look at it in a different manner, and be a little bit easier to manipulate. So we want to pilot a little bit of that.
And just to echo that, as, because I want to make this, we work with many districts across country. As a district, you are starting from a stronger place as far as thinking about scheduling, about scheduling expertise. So this is one of those cases where you're not in bad shape, by any means, you're actually well ahead of many of your peer districts. But there's still some big steps forward that we could take to help you get even further ahead of, and closer to where you want to be.
And one other question, you know, you talked about how we used to be, have all these people in different positions, and then you specifically talked about, you know, the experts with content-specific, with pedagogy, behavioral management. And reading some of these things, you know, I agree that I think our teachers are pretty much just managing some outbursts, rather than coaching and, you know, really coming up with things that will help these children and those who they deal with. So going back, you know, this has kind of been the norm for us to, with all the cuts that we've had to do. It's like you're suggesting that we go back to these, you know, where we have a specific person for behavior, we have a specific person pedagogy. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the idea is, so first of all, you know, you're probably, in the messy world that is K-12, you may find that some of your teachers do more pedagogy and less of something else. You don't always get to get to that completely pure, I am just pedagogy.
No, I understand that.
Anything else. But it's certainly that the, there's more specialization based on my strength. The second, and I do want to make an important point, some of the positions you lost were, if you've got what I will call your frontline special education staff, who do all these things that you ask them to do, and then over time, you have added and then had to take away, like the behavior person, or maybe even sometimes districts add a reading person, and then you lose that person. What I'm talking about is also making sure that these frontline people, who you've still got and will always have, thank the Lord, also get to specialize. So it's not just that we're layering on a small number of specialists on top of a large number of generalists. So that's a little bit different. But clearly, it's interesting that if you think about what you did in the past, and many districts have, is when you were able to add more positions, they tended to specialize. As you and we understand that these are complex things, and having deep knowledge and expertise in them are of great value. And your staff are asking for it. If there's a recurrent theme, whether it's the RTI, or the behavior, or scheduling, what we're finding is, is great openness, willingness, and desire for your staff for a little more help, a little more direction, a little bit more support. And I think it's in part because many of those positions that used to provide that have gone away.
Well, and the kind of reason I've asked this is because we've seen, even in some of our disciplinary reports, students with IEPs, there's been an increase in the discipline incidents. And I'm just thinking, if we went back to something like this, where there was maybe that expertise in behavior management, or, you know, just going back to that, I think perhaps, you know, is there a correlation between when we lost those, you know, that expertise, or even just those extra positions, to having a rise in our behavioral incidents, even beyond special ed? I'm just, I just think this would be very helpful.
Every district in the country has experienced an increase in students with significant behavior challenges. If there's any, I know you asked the questions, do you have enough staff? And said, you know, more is always better, and you can also make progress with what you've got. But if there was one area that I said, if you, if there's an area in which, if you could expand, it is around this behavior expertise, it is an area that just historically, no district, no district was ever staffed at the level, because it's one of the last skills and one of the newest fields, and the needs are growing. And, you know, the research has said that if you bring in the expertise, they can work with students and children, prevent the problematic behavior from happening. It never gets to the discipline. They get to stay in class, they get to learn, it's a very virtuous cycle. But it, and that's certainly an area in which requires expertise.
One, an area that, when you, when you look at national research, and certainly within our district and even regionally, an area that we have talked about, when we talk about, you know, the working with struggling students and the academic achievement gap, is looking at ensuring that the staff administration is somewhat, we look at being reflective of what that population looks like. And so, you know, as we talk about, you know, one of the slides, best practice para-professionals and academic support by content experts and those types of things, as you look at, when you have staff that leave, and you look at bringing new staff in, the area that I think is, would like to know what the, how you account for it here, is being reflective of what your student population is as far as your staff is concerned.
You know, we know, and you know, that when it comes to helping students, nothing matters more than the teacher. That, you know, there's no curriculum you can buy, no consultant you can hire, no program you can get. So the teacher is so important. And what makes a great teacher great is a pretty long list. Certainly, their ability to connect with the student, that relationship is very important. I think there's been just growing research on the importance of that. I think students seeing teachers and staff that look like themselves and have life experience that are similar absolutely matters a lot. Knowing the material and content matters, having high expectations matter. It's a complicated, long list of things we're looking for. And I think that, to your point, at every time a person leaves the district, you want to treat every new hire as critically important, because it is. And it's more important than the schedules we're going to build, and more important than the curriculums you're going to buy. And it's certainly, to your point, students being able to connect and relate to their teachers is very important.
Other questions?
Well, so when you were involved with doing these, this study, I always ask kind of the question about, well, did anything jump out at you that is impactful, cost neutral, and easy to implement?
Impactful, yes. Cost neutral, yes. Easy to implement, to be really honest, no.
No.
You know, this is a district, and I'm not just saying it to be nice, when you get to know me, I'm actually just not that nice. This is a district that's very thoughtful, it is reflective, it has implemented a number of efforts over the years. If there was something easy to do, your leadership at both the district and the school level would have already, has already done it. It means that what's left are impactful, cost neutral, but not easy. And that's why we've said, and I opened with it, it may be a good place to close with it, this will take a couple of years, two to three, it requires focus, it requires perseverance. And yeah, there are a lot of details that have to be worked out. Because no, there are not simple things left. I wish there were.
One, just short question. First of all, I think the scheduling, thoughtful scheduling from a school standpoint is an awesome idea. The standardizing of the, kind of the tier, the RTI, looking at our best practices across the district, I think that's going to be so beneficial. Here's my question though, and it kind of goes back to what Miss Deming was saying earlier, is how do you envision that instructional intervention part? Because I was a struggling student, that had the most impact on me when I was taken out of my class setting, and either put on a one-on-one situation or a group setting. How do you, I'm assuming it's going to differ by school, by grade, by building? I mean, but is there something, research shows that, okay, here's a best practice, like if they're really struggling with math, they do better in a group that's three or four kids, or one-to-one, or, you know, is there certain guidelines, best practices, evidence-based, that we should be following? Or really, is it, it's probably a combination of what the district has resources, why it too is, but I love it that we're taking them out of their situation, because voluntary instruction wasn't working, right? And, you know, to have a kid show up, come and show up if you want help, well, they're not going to come and show up. But pulling them out, I think is going to have a major impact. But going back to the question, what is best practice?
Yeah, so there's good news and bad news. So the good news is, there really are best practices. I mean, the, this has been an area of study for a good twenty years now. But the challenge, and it's not a huge challenge, but there are best practices with an S. And so what we're, but our experience has been, just to give me two minutes to take a step back, is we can help you get someplace to these best practices only after people say, I want to get there. So you're just about a step ahead of us of saying, you know, you know, where do we want to go, where do we want to focus? And then part of our work will be to share the research. If you think about at the secondary level, there are basically five models, they all work very well, they all have some very common themes to them, but there are definitely at least five flavors of how to do extra time with teachers who really know their stuff, building relationships. So we're, we're just a step or two, you're a step or two ahead of us as to where we're going to start sharing those best practices at a much more granular level.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Okay.
But they do exist.
I have, I have a couple of questions. So you identified the five areas. What does 2018, 19 look like in terms of priority? And if a priority or priorities haven't been developed, what's the process to make sure we have a priority and we begin the work as soon as possible?
So I think where we are in the timing is the fall, is the, we're far enough along, and there's enough broad understanding of the ideas, and enough traction and excitement by the ideas. So it's our sense that the fall is the time to both begin and end the conversation around the priorities, that, you know, it's a couple months, it's not a year. But by the winter, we should be working on creating some very detailed plans. And I think you can hope, and we often see this, that there'll be some early adopters, you're a big district, there will typically be early adopters who want to get moving a little quicker than others, and we generally encourage that. So throughout this year, you're going to see... So throughout this year, you're going to see both plans on a district-wide level being developed and also probably a quicker movement in some schools where we've got principals and staffs saying, yeah, I'm pressing that easy button and with your help, it'll be easy enough to do. So this is, this coming school year, you should see a lot of exciting things happen.
So when you work with districts, do you see the district, you know, there's different levels of centralization in terms of, you know, top-down, bottom-up, you know, the school running the whole show, the whole bit, do you see this being more centralized?
So it's a great question. So the first is, we work with districts everywhere on that spectrum, from the most virtually Soviet command and control to the most distributed that people write books about, where literally Central Office needs to get an invitation and permission to walk into a school. We, like most things in life, we have, and we're able to support whatever theory of management our clients have, but like most things in life, moderation seems to make the most sense. Having, from the Central Office perspective, a smaller list of strategies and programs is helpful, because it can be more effective. Having focus, I mean, these are hard, I mean, these are things that quite honestly, an individual school will not have the time, capacity, or wherewithal to do on their own. But to do it for all your schools is about the same effort to think through and plan as to do for one school. That being said, not all your schools are in the same starting place, not all your schools have the same needs. So finding what we call what should be loose and what should be tight. Having certain things supported centrally is a requirement because it just, you've got to narrow the scope of what you're asking Central Office to support. Allowing some principals to say, hey, I want to do something different and if it works, maybe that's great. But if it's not working, they say, come help me, you say, great, but we have a narrower list of things we'll help you with because we've already built those tools, we know they work, you can learn from your colleagues. So it's really about that kind of, kind of Goldilocks, it's somewhere in the middle. And just in general, avoiding the extremes will help you get to a good place, I think, quicker and smoother.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you so much for all your time and effort that's put in the district. We look forward to working with you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure for sure. Thank you very much.
Yeah. With the permission of, with the permission of the board, I'm going to change the agenda order. Our speaker Rod Wright is here. He's going to speak about community engagement, and if that's okay, I would like that to occur. We'll give him time to get up.
While Rod is coming up, I will just preview a little bit. Have you got him? The board, at the last meeting, we, again, Jay was up talking about forecasting deficit spending, not only for this year but for years ahead. And I think the question came is, you know, what is the tipping point? When do we, you know, besides telling you all and however many people watch online, when do we engage our community with these discussions and so that they give us input into where we go? So we went and had conversations with Rod from Unicom Art, ARC, who gets rave reviews for his work across the country, and asked him if he would come, and he graciously said he would come to talk to us about some community engagement models.
I'd like, before you also start, I'd like to take a moment to frame the conversation a little bit around our board policies. If you take a look at eight colon 10 and eight colon 12, eight colon 10 deals with, both of those deal with community engagement. Eight colon 10 says, "The board, in consultation with the superintendent, determines the purpose and objective of any community, any community engagement." So we are supposed to determine the purpose and objective. You're going to hear a lot of things about some other parts of it, but we're, we're supposed to be focusing on the purpose and objective. It also talks about, what are, what should some of the goals be? And it talks about the goals being, the extent to which people are willing and able to pay for education, the community's expectations for its schools, and the effective utilization of resources. And part of the community relations piece is trying to assess what the public opinion is on these varying goals. So that, those are my areas, which I, you know, is my job here is to try to focus us on board policy. And I wanted to do that in advance of the presentation so that we can be focused on the ends. Thanks.
I think we're ready.
All right, I'm going to keep that in mind too. I will try to be brief today, tonight. It sounds like that you're having a pretty long board meeting. And I just did a presentation at a board meeting, and the first question I got asked was whether I was a Cardinal fan or not. And I, my response to that is, will it affect how you think about my presentation in any way at all? But, good evening, my name's Rod Wright, I'm president of Unicom ARC in St. Louis, that's why I got the question. I'm here to talk about community engagement, kind of some best practices in that. There are points in the presentation where it makes some reference to referendum, and so I want to kind of give the disclaimer at the very beginning, that, that community engagement is a powerful tool to use in terms of assessing the direction that the community would like the district to go with or without referendum. A lot of times in Illinois, given the financial situations, it is a precursor to referendum, but, but is not necessarily a prerequisite for community engagement. We, you'll see the logo for it here, we did a community engagement program next door in District 203 that was not related to community engagement, and also did a program in Township High School District 211, that's the big high school district in Schaumburg and Palatine in that area. And again, it was for long-term visioning to support the development of a strategic plan, so I wanted to give that disclaimer right from the beginning. I won't read a lot about our work as a firm, we've been around, actually, we'll hit 50 years in 2020, which is pretty remarkable for a community, for a public relations and communications firm. Not many have made it that long. One of the reasons why we have made it that long was, we decided in the early 90s that we really wanted to focus in particular on K-12 and community college education in terms of providing services in that area. That's not all of our work, but it's about 75% of that work. And we kind of do three things. We do, I mentioned, community engagement programs, and that's the biggest source of our work. The ARC, our name stands for Attitude Research Company, and we do opinion research of various kinds. That's actually my background in the agency, I have a PhD in political science and public opinion research was my field, back in the days when we taught in Latin at universities before I went into the consulting business. And then we do all kinds of communications help, that's everything from print material, electronic, social media consulting, and included in that is some referendum work. And let me skip over the awards. Just in case you are down the road thinking about some kind of referendum, I wanted to raise this point because I think it's a really important one. This is a quotation from Superintendent John Carey, not Carey who was Secretary of State and ran for president, but C-A-R-Y, John Carey. John unfortunately passed away a few years ago. But, but said, I heard him say at a meeting, that the Board of Education wins or loses a referendum before it ever votes to place it on the ballot. And, and that's because, I think he knew about this, this pattern or this, this chart. I've been at this business for a long time, probably worked on, I don't know, 300 or 400 school elections in one way or another. But, but the pattern of a number of years ago, let's say back in the late 80s, early 90s, was the red line that you're looking at. And, and in those days, you could do some public opinion research and, and maybe support for a proposal was at 45%. You know, the Citizens Committee would come together and they'd organize and raise some money and put some mail out, knock on some doors, do whatever they needed to do, and they could boost support up over the 50% range, and everybody would have a big party on election night. But, but beginning later, the pattern is more the green dotted line, which means you do the polling, you're at 45%, the group comes together, they run a great campaign, but about the best that they can do is hang on to a pre-existing level of support at that 45% range. And if they don't do a good job, sometimes that support even slips. So you'll see survey work, maybe 46, 47, 48% on Election Day, they get 40 because it gets away from them a little bit. That's why, at least in my view, not just for election work, but for election work, that, that there be a community consensus about the direction of the district before you create the referendum question, rather than hoping that that somehow comes together in the heat of an election campaign, which is in an age, particularly with the opposition to public education that is out there, just doesn't happen anymore. And, and I wanted to emphasize how I phrase that sentence, which was not opposition to your proposal, but opposition to public education, which is a growing phenomenon in the United States right now, not people that are opposed to what you're doing in terms of specifics. They don't even want you to exist anymore, they want charters and the privatization of education. And I promise, that's the last sermon I'll give tonight, but we see that, we see that all the time. So I wanted to point that out. We get called in a lot of times to boards, we'll say, we're thinking about putting something on the ballot, what do you think? And I say, can you answer all four of these questions? Yes. And if you can't answer them all four, yes, don't put something on the ballot. And we've put this list together over the years because when we've seen a proposal fail, it's a pretty good chance one of these questions, maybe two of them were, were, had an O answer. Do we have a fighting chance? That's kind of where I was talking about with that chart that we were talking about. Two, do we have a bulletproof plan? And this gets at the issue of community engagement that I want to talk about. A bulletproof plan in my mind is not just what the plan is, but how it was put together. And it's not a bulletproof plan for moving forward, in my mind, unless there was community involvement in the development of that plan, extensive community involvement. Do we have internal unity? That just doesn't mean the Board of Education, if it means kind of top to bottom in the district, from the tip of the pyramid at the top all the way to the bottom of the pyramid. In fact, I have a good friend that's on the faculty, education school faculty at St. Louis University, that says, in a community, the lower you are down on the pyramid, the more influential you are in the community. And I don't know if that's the case or not, but it's certainly a good mindset to have. And then lastly, can we put together an effective program? I want to talk about mostly the first two of those questions. First, do we have a fighting chance? And that gets at the, the issue of doing good, solid public opinion research. And these are all the reasons that you do it, but, but the first point I want to spend a little bit of time talking about, and that's kind of talks cheap, nothing else is. And what I mean by that is, school districts spend tremendous amount of money a lot of times in resources communicating and oftentimes don't know with regard to message, whether that message is on target or not. Are you contributing to the noise that's out there from all the communications that people get? Or is there communications with purpose that's driven by research? And that's hot on my mind now because I just joined with Chris Tennell of the School District of Clayton at the National School Public Relations Association Conference, talking about theme and message development as, as driven by survey research and how important that is. I think the rest of these points are self-evident. I guess I'll talk to the third one about the bottom, which is just simply, when you're doing an engagement program, you know, for example, again, in District 211, we had lots and lots of people attend the meetings. It's a big district, you know, we, they were having each session, they did twice, one north, one south on the dividing line of I-90. But even with thousands of people participating in the process, there were tens of thousands who didn't. So one of the reasons why we did public opinion research was to see the alignment between everyone, that you can learn in a telephone survey, and the kind of active members of the community that were coming to the meetings. By far still today, the most accurate way to get public opinion research measured, or opinions measured, is with telephone surveys. This is just a slide about how you go about doing that. But one of the things I wanted to point out in doing surveys and driving research is, is learning about people's basic and fundamental values, how that drives public opinion, and the need to contextualize what you're trying to do with the right word choices. And I know that sounded like a mouthful because it is. But, but this example kind of shows this. I love this example, even though it's old, because it's from my own school district. And when the superintendent saw the survey, he said, you have the same question on there twice. And it was pointed out to him, the differences in tone and words in them. And, and what I like about this most is, as a community volunteer, I wanted to say the first thing. I'm always kind of slash and burn, hard-hitting, emotional messages. You know, we were going to sacrifice all the progress that we made if we don't do this. It's a tough message. As you can see, me and 45% of the people in our community would have supported that. On the other hand, the more soft message, the more, you know, the more kind of a conservative, we need to continue doing things, 67.8%. Point of this example is, if you're going to communicate, make sure you're using words and sentiments and values that communicate with people, rather than in a sense trying to, in a communications-wise, drive a peg and, a square peg into a round hole. Secondly, do we have a bulletproof plan? And that gets into talking about community engagement, the how and what that I mentioned earlier. I mean, and, and understanding that how you put the plan together is just as important as what the plan is. And I spent a little bit of time talking about why community engagement works, and then secondly, kind of some best practices. Some of these points are self-evident. Clearly in a school district, public permission is needed for any meaningful change, and that's true whether you're going on the ballot or not. Even if you're implementing a new math curriculum, it's important, at least in my view, to get public understanding of that curricular change, so they don't show up, you know, like 200 people in this room screaming at you because they don't understand what you're doing. People won't support what they don't understand, this is a critical point. A lot of times people get no votes in opposition, not because people fundamentally disapprove of what you're trying to do, they just don't get it. And, and when people are opposed, they vote no, when they don't get it, they vote no. Public is resistant to top-down approach, that's, that's obvious in a lot of opinion research that's being done now. Community engagement is a powerful communications tool, I can't emphasize that. It gives you something to talk about in a sense, where you can focus your communications in a way that people are paying attention. It's a thing that's going on that gets people from, you know, watching Wheel of Fortune every night and paying attention to some communication messages that you may be sending home. When, when community engagement is done right, in terms of implementing a plan, it builds a pretty good army for implementation. What I mean by that is that you get a lot of people who are active and going to meetings, who want to support key directions that the district is moving, and that's important. I skipped over the third from the bottom one, discovery is more powerful than persuasion because in terms of best practices, it summarizes better than anything else I can say about our approach to community engagement. By the way, I get on kind of a roll, if you have questions, just yell at me or throw some fruit or something. But I want to talk about this phrase for just a second. You are looking at my entire junior and senior high school faculty. I know that may look a little shocking in a district this size, but that's all of them, seven through 12. When I was in school, and on the, on the, on the big picture is Mary Sodeman, Mrs. Sodeman, that was a friend of my mom's and knew everybody in the community. She walked in when I was in high school saying she was teaching geometry, and we thought she was a social studies teacher, and in fact, she said she was a social studies teacher, and then informed, she didn't know why she was teaching math, but there were, you know, they must not have been able to find anybody to come up to this little town that I was raised in. So every day she'd come to class with, you know, the textbook, and we'd all kind of look at it together and try to figure things out, then we'd go to, back in the old days, to the blackboard, and we'd work in small groups, trying to figure out stuff that was in the book and, and answering the problems, you know, and trying to work on those together and figuring- and trying to work on those together and figuring it out. Then after we got it figured out, we'd sit down with her and kind of explain it to her. And by the end of the year, she was pretty good at geometry, and we picked up quite a bit of it, too. So a few years later, I'm off to college, and I'm doing really well in math, and I'm kind of a math statistics geek. That's why I like public opinion research. And it dawned on me, she was the best teacher that I ever had. And she was obviously pulling her leg a little bit. Because what she understood was that discovery is more powerful than persuasion. And what I mean by that, she knew that if she gave us data and information, that we needed to make decisions, the textbook, if she asked smart questions, if she put us into small groups where we collaboratively worked together to answer those questions, and then we explained it to her, that we would remember it forever. And that worked a lot better than her standing in front of the classroom and lecturing to us and telling us stuff. If people can figure it out on their own, making data-driven decisions, it's a lot more powerful than you trying to tell them stuff. You know, because they are kind of resistant to that. And that's how the community engagement programs that we put together, that I think that are effective, not just us, but around the country, I think they have that recognition. Best practices involves a large number of people, you know, that you, that every meeting, there's an opportunity for people to talk to each other in meaningful dialogue, and that there's a lot of two-way communication. You've got stuff to tell the community, the community's probably got things they'd like to tell you, and you need to get that two-way of communication going. Best practices is internal acceptance and support. It's a lot of work for the district to do a community engagement program. If you don't believe me, ask next door at 203, they'll tell you that. A clear charge. You were mentioning that, in a sense, in your, when you were looking at board guidelines or whatever that document you were looking at, the board needs to say what the boundaries are of the community engagement program. We want to create a process that will give us a report about, and then you put the boundaries out. And that can include stuff that you don't want people necessarily looking at. I don't mean looking at, but that you don't want recommendations about or a report about. Let me give you an example of that. In Paxton, Buckley-Loda, a little, a small district down close to Champaign, they wanted a report about a long-range facility improvement plan. In that charge from the board, it said, we've spent a lot of work on what's going on in the classroom on curriculum and instruction, and we don't want you telling us how to change that. We're comfortable with that. What we want is a facility plan that, where the buildings enhance our ability to do what we want to do in terms of curriculum, rather than impair. We want the buildings to help us do what we're trying to do in the classroom. So they took off the table, how do you teach English, or whatever, or the curriculum and instruction issues. Needs to be an open process. You need to get more than the usual suspects. You want a lot of people that participate, not just people. No insult to anybody here that attends, just the, those that attend board meetings. A lot of two-way communication, I talked about that. Comprehensive timeline planning syllabus, this is Dan Burns has worked for us for a long time, that's his language. That just simply means if you tell people in an engagement program, you want a report or recommendations about a certain thing, they need to have that be a data-driven process. They need to learn stuff to be able to make that report. And then that gets to the data and consensus, data-driven. More best practices, and I'm nearing the end of this, even though it looks longer than this. Everything needs to be well-planned. We learned a long time ago, if you have a bad meeting with 300 people in the room, you have 50 at the next meeting. Everything needs to reflect positively on this district, and people need to come and have a good time when they come to the meetings. They need to enjoy the meeting. We forget way too often that people ought to have fun on occasion. And they can have fun, it can be serious at the same time. We never have an engagement meeting where there's not small group work sessions, where people are working together in small groups, they're randomly assigned to a table, they learn something, and they decide something at every meeting. I'll give you an example. In Richland School District, they had a presentation about how buildings can enhance the delivery of curriculum and instruction, how well the buildings work functionally, not the physical condition, but the functional condition. And at that meeting, people prioritized elements of a facility improvement plan, taking that presentation into account. So they learned something, and then they began using that as building blocks for their report. And that gets at the documentation, where after every single meeting, we have a report that said, what did we learn tonight? What was our activity? What were the verbatim responses by table to that activity? What were the executive summary of those decisions? And what were the consensus points? And so at meeting three, let's say, there's a handout from meeting two that contains all this information. So you're putting the building blocks together for what will be a final report to eventually the Board of Education. This is the last real substantive chart that I'll spend some time on, because it kind of summarizes a lot of what I said. Again, it starts with the board charge. You know, this, when we do community engagement, the Board of Education charges the process with your expectations for what the end result's going to be. We always make this a community-driven process by creating what we call a facilitating team. And this group is about process, how the program gets put together, how it's customized for your district, not kind of a one-size-fits-all that may be up in my head someplace. Community leadership, some co-chairs, one, two, three, or more, and then maybe eight, maybe 15, maybe even more, community members are part of that group. Also part of that group would be administrative representatives, and also a couple of members from the Board of Education who are liaisons to the process. Reason for two and not three is notification issues, kind of things. Although these meetings are all public, nothing is, it's all transparent and open. At every meeting, like I say, people learn something, they'll have a report. We oftentimes start meetings with a state-of-the-district kind of report. I think in this community, that might be a really good presentation to make, kind of where we are in terms of the leadership of the district, what the challenges are that we have to face. The number of meetings is kind of driven by the charge. I mean, if it's only about facilities, you don't need as many meetings as it's about facilities plus everything else you're doing. It kind of depends. And then at the end of the process, you know, there's, there will be a series of meetings where they, in essence, finalize the report that they're going to make to the Board of Education. And that says recommendations on the slide, but oftentimes, it's a report, not a recommendation, specific recommendation. Let me give you another example of that. In Paxton, Buckley-Loda, they looked at a variety of options for a facility improvement plan. The community engagement sessions found a high level of support for two of them, of maybe six. And the report was, this is what we did, these are the options we looked at. The community engagement sessions clearly preferred two. That was the end of the report. It was the board's decision on how to move forward with that, in terms of picking one or the other, or, you know, maybe looking at something else. One of the reasons so the board members are part of the facilitating team and part of the process, is to make sure there's no disconnect at the end between kind of priorities and goals for the Board of Education, where there's alignment, not a disconnect, because you would certainly not want that to happen at the end. This is just another model that we sometimes use that can be done in a short period of time. Lots of communications, that's just a list of things, including, we're doing more and more and more and more work with social media, and we're finding that a lot of school districts kind of don't understand how it works. A lot of school, I don't mean this to be critical, but a lot of school communicators don't know how it works, because they don't want to delve into the math. I had an employee that went to the journalism school at Mizzou, at University of Missouri, and he liked to say, you know, we didn't go to J-School because we like math. And that gets at some of the issues with, with social media, I guess. But anyhow, lots of communications. We brand it, we give community engagement a name. There's just some examples and logos that are up, kind of right in the middle is Future Focus, which they're using and continuing to use in Naperville. Anytime they're trying to get community input on every, anything, they're using that name, they kind of branded it. So did St. Charles with 303 Summit. They have regularly, over the years, had some summit meetings. And, well, and you can see, a lot of those are, I think all of those are from Illinois, now that I'm looking at, except the bottom-left one is from New York, New Bedford, New York. Lots of communication materials. I mentioned that, that community engagement is something to talk about. You need to have the ripple effect of the meetings with a lot of communication materials. We also oftentimes have, going along with the engagement meetings, what we call a listeners' bureau, where you're, in essence, going to people where they are and not asking them to come to a meeting. So any place, there's like five people in a room, you have somebody going in and asking for input, and use social media, the website, news media. And then key outcomes, and I'll let you read those, but the point of these outcomes is how they align with those four questions that I started my presentation with, about unity, a bulletproof plan, you know, getting support, the community walking with you in terms of the key directions for the district, and then also getting a lot of volunteers, if you have to go on the ballot, if that's part of that, and I'm not saying that it is, where you've got volunteers who are ready to kind of take that next step on their own, because that effort can't be organized out of this building, it needs to happen separately from this building in terms of somebody forming a PAC or a campaign committee. I talked about, do we have internal unity? I tried to cover those points here. Then the last thing on here is just, can we conduct an outstanding campaign? And again, this has to do, if you go to referendum, and just kind of understanding the difference between informational work, kind of occurring simultaneously with some vote yes work that a PAC may be doing, but understanding they have to be separate, that they can't kind of touch each other. The district is, once you create the referendum question, is prohibited by state law from engaging in vote yes communications, and it's important to pay attention to that. I think the trick for school district success, particularly if you have to go on the ballot, which seems to happen more and more and more, like I say, in Illinois, given financial situations, real community engagement, integrating that with good public opinion research, and then if needed, kind of that strong referendum campaign at the end. I think if we have learned, I used this analogy already once, but I'll do it again. I think if we've learned anything over the years, one of the things we've learned over the years is not to try to put a square peg in a round hole and know how the program like this needs to be customized for every district, it needs to be right for here. You know, what was right next door may not be the right kind of program for here right now. We'll have some ideas of what the program ought to look like, but one of the first things that we do with the facilitating team is say, how do we make this right for your district? How do we make some changes in it where it's going to work and where we can kind of help think through those best practices? They need to be consistent, but the program can look in a lot of different ways. And then, I think the other thing we do with some experience at least, is, community engagement can be really messy, because you're dealing with the community. And it's not a straight line from A to B. There's a lot of zigzags in it. And a lot of what we do in part is kind of being a cat herder and, and kind of keeping our eye on the goal that may be down the road, but knowing that it can be a messy process in terms of getting there. And kind of using our experience, which frankly means, understanding that we've made some mistakes in the past and not repeating them, kind of learning from that, to kind of keep other programs on track the way they need to. So with that, let me open it up for questions. I took longer than I wanted to, but had quite a bit of material to cover, so.
Do you have one question for you?
Rod.
Rod, I said, um, what'd you say?
Yeah.
Rod.
Yes.
We have a wonderful communications department in our district. We have an amazing superintendent, probably one of the best-known, well-known, as of recently, superintendents in the state. As you know, we're a very large district. This board is very much out in the community, as much as we can be. Always there to answer questions to the public, always there to talk to the public. We try to get out, all of us, as much as we can. I think as a board, we would like to do even more community engagement. But here's my question. Because of OMA guidelines, that we have to follow, the Meetings Act, and notify, and everything else like that, what does that look like? Because, and I know you said it's specific to the area, to what works right for you, and everything else like that, but I'm curious what it looks like, because, first of all, if there's more than three of us there, we have to call it a public meeting, if we're all, if we're all engaging. But what does it look like? Paint a picture for me, because I'm trying to understand what a listening tour, what a communication engagement thing looks like. And the reason I ask is because 12 years ago, our district had a very poor listening engagement tour, that I think we could have done better at. So I want to hear now what you see and have seen that is working really well for districts to go out there and engage and listen and talk to their communities.
Right. You raised a number of issues. One, you have a communication staff. One of the, the district I was at earlier, and I'd had no one. One of the interesting things about our work is that we tend to get more work with large districts that have large communication staff than we do with districts that have no one. And I think there's several reasons for that. One, districts that are committing resources to communications kind of get the need. And then we work with a lot, particularly through the National School Public Relations Association, we work with a lot of really top-notch school professors, professionals, I mean, that know that we're bringing something a little different to the table when we work with them as part of their team. I'll give you an example of that. We do, we've been working since 1990 for Parkway School District in St. Louis County. They've got about 20,000 students. They have six or eight people on their communication staff. They do award-winning communications annually, brilliant stuff. But they never go into a program like this without bringing us to the table to be part of the brain trust, if you will, I guess. The other question, or it has to do with kind of the role of the Board of Education in this, and I guess my first answer to that would be, that the community engagement program that we're talking about is really a really big community collaborative way of having a committee that at the end comes in and reports to the Board of Education. And we would want the board to be part of that in every step, but also, you know, as part of that, entrust the leadership of that to citizens that we will pick, that facilitating team that I talked about, so that there's kind of citizen ownership of that at the end of the day, and they work collaboratively with the district to put the program together. And if it does lead to referendum, they become citizens that will drive the process, where it's perceived as being citizen-driven and not board-driven, so that there's capacity to take that next step. And it's been my experience, and I don't mean this as disrespect to anybody that's been on a board, but the more that there's a perception that there's citizen leadership driving the process, rather than the superintendent or the Board of Education, the better that next step works. And there's a lot of reasons for that. One of which, when you're just out there in the community, a citizen can focus on message better than a Board of Education member can. And I'll give one simple example of this, but when you're out there as a member of the board and you get questions about anything, you got to answer it. When I chaired the referendum committee in my own community, my favorite three words were, "I don't know." Because I was a, but I'm here to talk to you about our two proposals that are on the ballot and why they're important. I'll get you the information, but, you know, you were able to stay on message. So that's kind of a long-winded answer. You know, we want the board to be involved. If you want all board members to attend the facilitating team meetings, like they did in Geneseo, we'll post the meetings, they're public anyhow. What we did in Geneseo was we had two board members that were liaisons that participated in the facilitating team meetings, the other five sitting in the cheap seats. But they were there. I don't- cheap seats, but they were there. I don't, you know what I mean by cheap seats. So that's, did that get at some of the?
Yeah, yeah. I, I was just curious how it looked, because, you know, we, we would all love to hear, you know, and we, we have a wonderful PTA group, and, and so we hear a lot of that, that comes and is centralized over a governing body of all our PTA. So we hear what's going on in the community, and our community isn't shy to let us know how they feel about things. But it's always good to get out there and listen. And, and I think it's good when I can hear not only my ears, but I have six other people's ears, too, you know?
Right. And at the actual meetings, let's say we have hundreds in the room, we'll have tables set up for the board. We'll recognize the board. We will ask the board not to participate at the tables, because what happens is when you sit down, you start getting a lot of questions, and they don't work, and they don't talk. So, but, but we'll cover all the details of that, should you decide to do something like that. But, but, but I, I think you'll find, much like in District 211, for example, the board meetings found, the board members found the meetings very exciting to attend.
Next question.
I, I had just one, one question. I think it's pretty quick, but you mentioned you use telephone surveys, and I'm, I'm just kind of surprised still that, because people don't answer their phones, they don't recognize the number, they won't pick it up. So how valid and reliable is the information that you get from them?
We actually have less trouble completing phone calls now than we did in the 80s, before the do-not-call list came around. One of the interesting things in our business was, before the do-not-call list, for those of us who are old enough to remember, you'd sit down to dinner, and everybody from the aluminum siding salesman to the plumber, to whomever was calling at the dinner hour, and people were infuriated. They got on the do-not-call list, and they weren't getting phone calls, except from people like us, who are not covered. And so after the do-not-call law went into effect, the response rate started to go back up. The second challenge to do on phoning was, was people not having landlines and, and cellphones. And not to get in the weeds too much on this, but, but up until fairly recently, cellphones, the cellphone numbers that you would buy were attached to where the bill was sent. So my cellphone that I have in my pocket is atta, was attached to my office address, not where I lived. But, but there's been recent laws that are recent changes in that, where now the issue is not getting cellphones. You get too darn many of them. Like in District 211, we got, you wouldn't believe the number of cellphones that we got. I mean, just like at my house, I've got five built in my house, and that doesn't count the one I have in my pocket. Where that came from was that the, the, the rule change was that all these credit card companies that have captured cellphone numbers for early fraud warnings, they are now selling those. And so I don't know if you've noticed, you're getting a lot of spam calls on your cellphone. That's why all the credit card companies are, and others, not just them, but they're the biggest ones that do this. Those, those numbers are all now available, and when you give up your cellphone number for that, you're off the do-not-call list. So, you know, the trick is now figuring out which of those cellphone numbers you want to call. What we do is, if we've got a landline and a cellphone at the same house, we try the landline first, then we'll try the, the cellphones, because they're a little more expensive to call, because you can't use autodilers. It's federal law. You can't use autodilers on a cellphone number.
So Rod, when you, when you do the, the tele, the telephone surveys, do you use the district as an identifier? Is that?
Oh, what does it show up on?
Recognition, yes.
What does it show? I think it shows up, I think we have some choices on that. I'll have to ask Andy about that, but I think it shows up as Consumer Research International, or CRI. And that's the name of our vendor that we use, that is in Texas. We use a, a lot of the big phone, field services are, are close to universities, because they can get articulate people that, that are pretty good with technology. And we use CRI in Texas, because we do a lot of work in Chicago, and we need Spanish-speaking interviewers on occasion. There are a bunch of them at CRI. But back to your question, we're not having a lot of response rate problems, and, you know, I keep up with this in terms of the literature. Phone surveys are still proving to be pretty remarkably accurate. Now, where the industry is moving is on something called internet panels, but they're not, not where they need to be yet for an area as small as a school district. I could do an internet panel in DuPage County or Will County, but they haven't developed the panels enough yet where you can break them down by a school district. So, but that's the wave of the future.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
That was probably way more than what you wanted to know about that subject.
Others?
Great information, way too much information. You can tell you know what you're doing. You know, you hit a roll and you keep coming. I love it. I think we, you know, at least me individually, we as a board need to digest that and really figure out what that, what you call board charge is, what I call purpose and objective is.
Right, right.
So before you start running down the path, we can give you the line, so that, so that it gets, it gets held, and then it comes back to us right. There's, there's no sense in trying to be urgent about it. We want to start it right. So I think that developing the charge, purpose, objective, whatever you call it, is going to be our charge moving forward if we want to go down this path. So that's, you know, thank you for your input, your time. I don't have any specific questions, but it's more directed towards us.
A couple of points about that, though, is that I kind of skipped over soak time. Doing community engagement correctly takes time.
Sure.
You, you don't tell people you're going to engage them in an important discussion and say, "And we got two weeks," or even two months. Back on just the charge side, we have a Getting Started notebook that's about that thick, that's got samples in it, that kind of stimulates thinking a little bit. And it's everything from, from a, a long-range plan to more specific areas.
If you could get Karen or Jay, if any of that timeline stuff you have, I'd love to see that, or if you could get that to us.
You mean in terms of?
What you thought as far as, did you say timelines, as far as how long it takes to engage people on various things? Okay.
Well, we're getting a lot of people right now that are, are wanting to do some kind of engagement program, and they're looking at the March election, and it's, it, it's tight. It's almost impossible, for example. I, I'm not saying it can't be done, but, but Richland, Richland Community Unit School District Number One, it's in Olney, Illinois, they're looking at the March ballot, but they started in December of 15. I mean, we've, we've been at it a long time. You know, and the problem with the schedule for March right now is to engage the community. You got to be done by Thanksgiving, because you've got to, you know, if it leads to ref, that referendum, you got to take that vote right around the end of December. No one's going to want to meet in December anyhow. So, you know, and the school year is, you know, you're going to go to staff that's already getting ready for the school year and saying, "Oh yeah, we got another great big program. We want you to start." And it, it's just the way the school works, it doesn't, doesn't work very well. And then again, if it leads to referendum, this is a whole other issue, but spring elections have not been very kind to school referendum over the last 10 years in Illinois.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. As you can tell, I love talking about it.
Good stuff, yeah.
Thank you.
Jay?
Jay has no, nothing.
You might provide fuel for the fire for community engagement.
Wish I could say you're saving the best for last. Good evening, board members. We're in uncharted territory. Typically, this is the time of year when we've moved from a forecast into building a budget, and, and we're starting to land that big 747 in our spending plan for our school district. But as you'll hear tonight in the presentation, although the state of Illinois passed a budget, we don't have a spending plan for schools, so we'll talk about that a little bit. And we'll talk about our need to continue to pass a budget by the end of September, and my recommendation going forward. And we'll talk a little bit about District Goal Three. I traditionally talk about where we land and how we're handling our finances, state funding for fiscal year 2008. Senate Bill One seems to be the bill that is most likely at this point in time to, to come out for a school spending plan, but I think as the leaders down in Springfield work back and forth, something else could change with what that evidence-based funding model is. And then our draft budget, which is really quite draft, because we don't know what we're getting from the state of Illinois at this point in time and next steps. District Goal Three is to manage our resources efficiently and effectively. You've changed that from having a 25% fund balance or better, and scoring as recognition a number of years ago. And we've stayed in recognition or review. Most of those times when we were in review, it was because the Board of Education felt the need to go into our fund balances and spend some money, usually for technology or safety plans. I anticipate that for fiscal year 17, which we just ended, that we will receive recognition. And that's because, although we'll be in a deficit spending scenario, it's because the state of Illinois still owes us $10.3 million. They are still short a categorical from last, from fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 16. So I, I think once they credit us for their shortcoming, we'll receive that recognition of financial recognition.
Jay, can we interrupt you as you go, or should we wait?
Certainly. No, go right ahead.
On that recognition issue, I think, you know, the state practice of saying something is better. Because of poor financial management by the state, doesn't make it better, right?
Correct.
So we're talking about, you know, them putting us in financial review, because they don't pay us, and then giving us credit, saying they're recognizing us.
Yeah, great point.
Okay.
When they're just above junk status.
Yeah. So their mismanagement, and then declaring us to be financially recognized does not make the whole situation better.
Good point. There are five indicators that the state looks at for whether or not we make recognition or review. Our fund balance to revenue ratio, and we're, we've been hovering around 30, 31, 32% for a number of years, and we'll continue to hover around 30%. Our expenditure to revenue ratio, and that is honestly whether or not we've got an excess at the end of the day, or if we went into fund balances at the end of the day. And if you've got, if you're spending less than a dollar of what you take in, then, then you receive all of your credit for that. And if you spend more than a dollar of what you take in, you get less of that. And that's where the state, Mr. Krubus has socked us, and we're going to fall short. Days cash on hand is working cash, and we go between 130 and 150 days, and I don't expect that to change. Our percentage of short-term borrowing max, that's the tax anticipation warrants that I've talked about with the board before. We don't have any tax anticipation warrants, so we've got 100% of, of that indicator. And then our percentage of long-term debt margin remaining is the bonds that we're paying down. And as you know, we've got 10 more years of bonds at about $28 million, and we're paying that down. Last year, our debt margin, our, our available amount that we wanted to go out for more bonds was 63%. And that'll grow, because we're going to make our payments this year to closer to 65 or 66%. So we're doing a great job of paying down our bonds. So to your point, Mr. Krubus, if the state was doing their thing, we'd make recognition. And they realize that, and because of them, it would be a review scenario. State budget news. So I waited until probably the last possible minute to put this presentation together, and traveled down to Dr. Sullivan's office about every two and a half hours to see what she had heard, and what I had heard, and what I was reading. And, you know, we were hoping that we'd get more great news, but we did finally have a state budget come together. Senate Bill Six was passed, and it took quite a bit of work. It's $350 million more for the evidence-based funding model. That is more money for education, but not enough to really float our boat. It's $65 million more in regular and vocational transportation, $50 million more in early childhood, and $38.5 million more for bilingual education. And then all other categoricals are held at the fiscal year 17 funding level. There's a whole harmless associated with Senate Bill One, which we'll talk about in a little bit, which would, would be better for us. But what they also put in here is that the, for the spending of the state budget to work for schools, it's got to be associated with an evidence-based funding model. And all of the forecasting work and all of the budget building that we did was off of the old funding model. So we spent from January until now talking about how the old funding model, the foundation formula, our student population, all of that affects our budget now. The state of Illinois has to come up with an evidence-based funding model for us to start to get our appropriations, to receive money from the state of Illinois. So, long story short, we're going to have to pass a budget, and my recommendation is going to be to pass a budget off of the old funding model, so that we can meet our, our deadline of September, and that when, hopefully, the state of Illinois comes up with a new funding model, we'll do an amended budget in November and in December, when we find out what that is, whether it's Barrickman's 1124 or Senate Bill One. Senate Bill Nine was a $5 billion tax increase, and it was an income tax increase, and that's where they're coming up with some of their money. Senate Bill Forty-two was the budget implementation bill, and there's authorization for the teacher's retirement system to offer a Tier Three defined contribution plan. There's a lot in that bill, and some of the board members asked some very good questions about it, and it sounds like TRS has to get their act together and communicate with us on what that means for us. In addition to that, there's a shift of normal pension costs to school districts for anything that is above $180,000. So any salary of a staff member that's above $180,000, the district has to pick up the normal contribution to that, which is just about 8%. To our district, it's going to be $10,400. That is, in some folks' mind, a, a way to phase in a pension cost shift, instead of phasing in a percentage of the entire population. The General Assembly in Springfield can just, regularly, when they need to drop that from 180,000 to 140,000 to 100,000, until it's everyone in the teacher's retirement system and SIRS. I mentioned Senate Bill One, the evidence-based funding model. That's the one that seems to be getting the most play, and it's passed both chambers. It's not yet on the governor's desk, but the governor has stated that he's either going to amend it and veto, and/or veto the bill. There's the portion of that bill that deals with Chicago that he doesn't care for. Barrick's been Bill 1124, which was also a good piece that was a part of the discussion in Springfield. It seems to be a better bill for us. It gives us more money. So that's the one that, you know, if it came out, would be better for us. Either one of those, if there's a property tax freeze, and, and there's always the continued possibility of that, it kind of wipes the slate clean, and we're back to a, a deficit scenario and less revenue from the state of Illinois, because, you know, as you know, the, the local property taxes have been the most reliable source of revenue for our school district. They have been the only source of revenue that has increased, and I would hope that that bill does nothing with new property, because Todd and I have started our journeys, and there's a lot of new property going on, and, and that has saved us the last couple of years. There's a...
Have you mentioned that to the, oh yeah, powers of the, okay.
The last, last couple hours, you'll be, you'll hear, once you get home or leave here, the governor has, has thrown out his, what he plans to do as far as amending, if Senate Bill One gets sent to him. So you'll be interested to see that, won't you?
I can't imagine any of those leaders in Springfield want to be the ones who didn't fund education. I've got to think there's an immense amount of pressure on them. I can, I can tell you this, that, and I think I put this in a memo to you, on August 3rd, that's when we typically would receive our first general state aid payment. So that's got to be a point in time when they've got to think, they got to start getting some money to schools. But again, July 1st is the start of our fiscal year, and they haven't settled their, their, their... But again, July 1 is the start of our fiscal year, and they haven't settled their situation in Springfield, and we're not receiving any money, and we don't have a spending plan for schools yet. If they were not, the worst possible case scenario is that if we started school and they argued on, a number of school districts that are in worse financial shape than us would start to fold their tents. And the analysis I've done with PMA, we can make it till April 1 before we run out of all of our funds. So it's not a great situation, but it's certainly better than some downstate school districts. And I've got to imagine that something would happen in Springfield before we even get close to that. So, you know, some of the highlights of Senate Bill One, and it does help us out slightly, and it helps us out mostly because of the hold harmless. But there's, as I talked about before, there's 27 elements of what's appropriate and how you should staff and serve the students of a district like ours. And they're falling $62 million short on what they said in this funding model we should have to institute all of those 27 elements.
Can you repeat that number again, please?
62 million. Of all of our comparable districts, and this just again speaks to how reliant we are on the state of Illinois and that we are the least property wealthy school district of our comparable districts. We are the lowest in adequacy when you put in Senate Bill One. We're at 81%, and our comparable districts all fare better than that under our scenario. They don't necessarily receive more money, but they're, they always were in a little bit better position. And then there's some of the really wealthy districts that could institute all those 27 elements at this point in time with their current finances and not even going to an evidence-based funding model. They've got enough revenue streams coming in now that they could institute everything and have money that they could sock away. Senate Bill One provides $861,000 more for us. And it's that particular chart where you say, what are you complaining about, Jay? Look at how much higher your spike is. But that doesn't determine how much more our need is than our comparable district. We really have a greater need. And as you can see on the bottom right chart, we're at $30.88 per student. And, you know, the two comparable districts that are close to us are Batavia and Community Unit School District 200, which is Wheaton. But the rest of the school districts that we cop to really aren't receiving much from that evidence-based funding model because they've got the money in their districts at this point in time.
So we, under Senate Bill One, we are a tier, considered a Tier Two district, correct?
Correct.
With the latest amendments that were added to Senate Bill One, there are now 270 roughly, I think, school districts that are Tier One school districts. Any amount of money under, I can't remember what the number is, that is new to education funding in Illinois will only go towards Tier One schools. I think it was 100, as long as it's under $150 million, any of that money will only go to Tier One schools. After that, then we wait in line. And I think our line number is like 650 or something like that. So for us to see new funding, that probably won't happen. But they, while they say that our funding shouldn't be less than what they are offering of this additional $860,000.
Yeah, my understanding is that all, the first infusion of new money goes to all the Tier One schools and lifts them into Tier Two. And the roughly 50% of what's remaining goes to those now Tier Two schools, which are previous Tier Ones and current Tier Twos. So it's spread very thin across all those Tier Two schools, and that's where our $861,000 comes from. The Barrickman's 1124 gives us about twice as much. So, you know, the $861,000, we'll take every dollar we can get. What I like most about either one of the two plans is that it holds us harmless with last year's money at the very least. So, you know, if there's not a tax freeze associated with it, it's going to be better than what we've got in our budget that I'm going to show you shortly.
What if there's not enough money for the hold harmless?
Then we're back to square one. So here is our draft budget with our operating funds. We've got $321,745,080 and $80 in total revenue across the district. The board authorized going into deficit spending by about $3.6 million. We've got total projected expenditures of $325,139,930. So our overall projected deficit is the $3385,850. We're showing a deficit in our education fund, and that's because for a while there, as the property values are dropping and our tax rate was climbing, we were reaching the ceiling of the $4 max that we could put in there. So now that our property values are starting to drop again, we're going to be able to levy more money into the education fund without hitting that maximum, and we won't have to worry about that deficit. But as you know, for...
Our property values are dropping?
I'm sorry, as our property values are rising. As our property values are rising, we've got more availability in that $4, so we'll be able to shift more money into the education fund if there's not a property tax freeze. And that's why every spring and April, you authorize us to do a short-term loan into the education fund to cover some of our expenditures, and then we loan it back. So total, we're looking at 29.9% fund balance to revenue ratio, which would meet the Board of Education's target. I want to point out that our state sources dropped from my forecast. They dropped from my forecast, I think, for three particular reasons. One, I wasn't conservative enough in my forecast. Our student enrollment dropped more than it had previous years. And then finally, our student attendance dropped by a half a percent across the district, which was surprising to me. And when we filled out the general state aid form in early June, it became evident to us that that was three things that impacted us. So we made some reductions to the budgets up here at the central office to get ourselves back in line.
Jay, can I say one more thing? Because I know you, it's probably important to mention, you've mentioned in the past, is that what's being talked about right now, the latest we've heard, is a four-year property tax freeze. And that would mean, did you say, $35 million loss to our district, correct?
Over those four years, correct.
Right. And I know the board has said this frequently in the past, that while a property tax freeze sounds good, the reality is, and I talked to our assessor, the reality is, people's property taxes will still go up from year to year to year. It will just freeze our ability to levy against homeowners. But also keep in mind is that the school district is capped of what they can levy to CPI. And the highest it's been in the last five years was last year at, what, 2.0? What was it, 2.?
2.1 will be the levy that I'll put together for this December if it's available.
So the highest we've levied in the last five years is 2.1%. But that freeze will be the $35 million loss to our district. So I just think it's important for people to know that.
That's a good point. And as, you know, there's a variety of things that impact homeowners' property taxes. Anytime the state legislates a new exemption for a class of folks, we still get that money, but the distribution, the burden of that exemption that maybe, you know, person A receives, person B has to pick up. And anytime an industry or auto dealership or a company or Lowe's goes out of business and that property value goes down, the burden of that property value goes to other folks. And then as property values go up, there's just an increase in taxes associated with the increase in property value. So there's, it's a very complicated situation, and folks are going to see change in their values. And if some, one neighborhood, I've said this to the board before, their property values go fast, grow up faster than another's, the burden will shift from one to the other. And with two counties, sometimes Will County levies a little higher than DuPage, and sometimes it's vice versa, and you could see the burden of the taxes for the school district go back and forth.
Three points I want to make on this slide. We look at the state sources of revenue across. It's $39 million. Is it accurate to say that we're trying to pass a budget that started 17 days ago and we're plus or minus $39 million?
Yes.
The second point is on operations and maintenance. We're budgeted to spend about $6 million in there. What did our consultants say that we should spend approximately in operations and maintenance?
For this fiscal year, it's just over $14 million. There's $6 million worth of roofs that need to be done this year, and there's roofs that we've deferred from last year and the year before, so we're a little behind.
So we're basically borrowing from our buildings in order to, I mean, we said initially that we would never spend exactly what was budgeted, or our consultant said we should spend. Our average spend was a little less, but that's still a wide gap. So we're borrowing from our buildings in order to make some of this budget. That's not sustainable. The third point I want to make is to pat you on the back a little bit. In 2014, you did a forecast for 2018, and it showed a projected ending fund balance that ratio as being 28%, which is pretty darn close to the 29% three years later with all the variables we're dealing with. So, good job.
He's a wizard.
Work the magic.
Janet Bullio is going to call me Mr. Wizard for the next year.
Does it say?
Looks likely.
Yes, we have been borrowing against our buildings for a number of years.
$272 million for local taxes. Can that be impacted by this tax freeze?
Oh, that's a great question, yes.
So that also is variable in here, possibly. Hopefully not, but...
That's right. That is exactly right, because I've projected what our last, our spring installment of taxes would be, which would fund the second half of the year. And so if we aren't able to levy that 2.1%, then that will also negatively impact this fiscal year. Thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, so you built in the 2.1 into that?
You have to look at both, your existing levy and your future levy.
You have to, yeah.
First draft budget, non-operating funds. We've got our debt services, which is the money that, you know, we'll levy, and there's been no discussion about taking away our ability to levy to pay off our bonds most recently. Our capital projects, and that $5.2, $5,225,300 is a conservative dollar amount. I've got $800,000 in there for developers' contributions of land cash, and it's been coming in about twice as high. I have our $925,000 for our first installment of the sale of the 11 acres by Country Lakes. And I have the December installment of the sale of our 25-acre parcel over by the Brock Brody estate. So that is that $5,225,000. Todd's carrying about $2 million over with the air conditioning, which was, will probably be expended sometime here and before the snow starts to fly as we complete the air conditioning project. And then under capital projects, because that's where we're putting the money, I put in there, if the board desires to, that we likely have the opportunity to pay off our two debt certificates. And I hope that sometime in January, right after they're callable, I can make that recommendation to the board, and they can decide if we want to pay those off. Our next steps, you know, now we've got the budget, I've got to give some credit to Mr. Shipley, who's done a phenomenal job working with me to put this together. He's, I thought I was pretty good at Excel. He embarrasses the heck out of me. He's really a strong guy and a great hire, and he's done nice work with us. So we're going to continue to develop this budget using the old funding formula. And I don't suspect that you're going to see a whole lot of change between now and then unless there's something that happens at the federal level and we find out that we're not going to get some title funds and we'll have to make some reductions. Next month, on August 14, I'll come to you and I'll give you the tentative budget, which will be built off of the old model. And at that point in time, you know, we'll put it up on display and give the public an opportunity to look at it and come back to you in September so that we can have it approved, because it's got to be approved before the end of September. And then hopefully sometime between that point and now, the state settles on an evidence-based funding model. And while we're approving this budget, I can start building with Mr. Shipley the new budget, which we'll bring back to you for an amendment.
So we have to approve the budget before the end of September, but the legislature doesn't have to...
No.
At all.
Pass a budget or pass an education funding formula.
And it appears it's going to be much more fluid than ever before, and that's almost incomprehensible because if they pass the funding formula, then we're awaiting tax freeze legislation, and then we might be awaiting pension cost shift.
Oh, and let's not forget our miscategoricals either.
Is there any hope of recovering those, that $10 million?
I don't think likely, not anytime soon. Not with the backlog of bills that the state has.
Jay, or Karen, either one. So SB One, it, you know, the governor has said that he would veto. Does it appear that there are enough votes to override it since we based, has that...
No.
Okay, so, so we've...
This is another, this is a political showdown that's going to happen again, and they're using children.
So if it's not, then we'll, then you'll have to go back to redo, to redo our budget to make those adjustments since we based most of ours on SB One?
Well, the worst possible case scenario is that they don't find, they don't come to some agreement on an evidence-based funding model, and we would receive no money from the state of Illinois. And, you know, we would start spending, and the further we go, the further we would spend into our reserves.
Up through April 1, she said.
Exactly.
They have to come to some compromise, because otherwise there is no, there's no money. Because the budget, the budget says it has to be an evidence-based model. So unless they can come up with some compromise, the comptroller will release no money towards education, not even the old model, because the budget says it has to be an evidence-based model.
There are schools that will not be able to open without the August payments.
So they'll find, they've got to do something, okay.
It was reported that one of the, I think it was a Senate representative that wanted to, this funding crisis to a head so that they could leverage this. And I just, I think that's vulnerable, that they can't, that they would use children in that manner. So they need to make some decisions that don't put children, you know, put children in the middle of this. Just makes me very angry.
Any other questions? Comments? Plus or minus.
How many more comments do you want?
Yeah, do you want us to go on?
No, I really don't. Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to be democratic.
Most of it's just more frustrating for us.
Thank you.
Those late night conversations.
Thanks a lot, Jay.
Another, another big finish.
I do not have a board update at this time.
Say it again.
Signatures.
I'll approve.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.